I'd like to call to order the Charter of Township of Shelby Planning Committee meeting on May 23rd. Secretary Moore is absent this evening. Commissioner Turner will be the acting secretary. Commissioner Turner, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Dallow?
Here.
Commissioner DeSico?
Here.
Commissioner Bernardi, absent. Commissioner Casali?
Here.
Commissioner Moffett, absent. Commissioner Moore, absent. Commissioner Vire?
Here.
Commissioner Oppone?
Here.
Commissioner Turner is here. We have a call.
Thank you. First on tonight's agenda is approval of the agenda. If there are... Thank you.
Vote.
Moved by DeSico, support by Turner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next will be the approval of the minutes from May 9th of 2016. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by DeSico. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Turner, did we have any correspondence this evening?
No, we did not.
Okay. Tonight's agenda, we have one site plan, two site plans and... Oh, I'm sorry. One site plan and three public hearings, and we will be combining the two public hearings for the property at 21 Mile Road in Van Dyke. So first, we have site plan number 16-17, Jim Swinkowski, Shelby Township Fire Department, 47460 Shana Road, parcel number 23-07-25-300-043. The east side of Shana Road, north of 22 Mile Road, fire station number five. Is the petitioner here to...
Yes, as you all know, this is a site plan for the property, four and a half acre property located on east side of Shana, north of 21, for the proposed fifth fire station. You'll have to guide me through the rest of this.
Okay. Commissioner... Mr. Chairman?
The fire station, since it's a township-owned property, has permitted use in the R-1B district, and there's sites sufficiently large enough to accommodate the building and the accessory site improvements. It's also been positioned kind of on the northern property line of budding the church with 120-foot setback to the lots in the Pheasant Run subdivision, so it'll minimize the impact on that neighborhood. If you can see from our review, the site plan fully complies to all planning department comments. There are a modest number of engineering comments that still need to be addressed. They're really more housekeeping, anything else that aren't substantial, indicating the existing lot lines in the Pheasant Run subdivision. Any easements indicate the address on the site plan and show where the water service line is. Otherwise, it's very clean, very well-done plan, and we would... There's a motion for approval that we're offering for the commission this evening.
Yeah, that's great. You know, thank you. Yeah, but we met with the... Some of the homeowners that live right there, and we had told them that, you know, obviously we put the drive-through apparatus bay on the church side. We moved the property up as far north or far west and east as we can to get, you know, obviously get away from them, give them some privacy. We are not, you know, obviously our other two stations there on the west side of the township aren't a residential area, so I did send letters out to the homeowners, spoke to some of them, asked to be invited to homeowner associations, but we really didn't have any questions or issues from any of them that live along the south side and the east side.
Okay, great. To the board, do we have any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Herr Dallow?
Chief, it's not about the building. It's about more about the truck. Do we know how many trucks we moving to that site?
Yeah, we do. It'll be the same as our other two, other three substations. We'll have one fire engine, one ambulance, and a pickup truck that we use for some smaller running around, some errands, and a light response, and so that'll be it.
We definitely need that fire station in there because there's a lot of new development happening in the area, and I believe you're going to be serving through that station marketplace area also by... From the station or there's a different station close to it?
No, it'll be that station. You know, this is obviously, this proposed station has gone back, you know, probably since the first talks were probably back in 2005, and if you look at the development from 2005 through now, it's a very highly, you know, that four square miles that abut 21 in Shana account for the majority of our runs. If you look at the township, everything east of M-53, which is about 12 and a half square miles, comprises about 42% of our overall run volume. That's EMS, car accidents, and fires, and if you split it, those four square miles of that percentage carries about 52 to 55% of those runs, so we have a highly dense population area down there, a lot of run volume, and that is the one area of the township that we do not have a, you know, first response fire station.
Chief, one more concern, if you may please. We have couple buildings that recently was recommended for approval, and they like, I believe there were seven-story buildings.
Uh huh.
At the truck, the engine that's going to be there, going to be able to serve that height?
Well, no, that would be a fire engine because obviously all four, you know, hopefully, knock on wood, five stations. We all work together to support it. Our ladder truck that we have, one's a 70-foot, one's 100-foot, which you typically, you know, think about 10 feet per story, so we should be able to get to about five or six stories, but with proper building codes and stand pipes in the stairwells, typically anything above two or three stories, when a ladder truck goes up, that, you know, obviously our rescue, you know, we're doing interior rescue through the stairwells with proper building construction, pressurized, you know, there's a lot of things that go on because there's a lot of 15, 16-story buildings around here. It all comes down to the building code and how we manage it, but we train for three- and four-story fires, so that is not, you know, for us, because I know the fire marshal and I had a long talk on it, and I have no issues because I think that there's a six-story building already there, and we had no issues with it. This ladder will get us up to the front story with the windows and the sixth floor, and then obviously with a proper, with the stairwells and a proper protection through the fire suppression system and the stand pipes, it shouldn't be an issue for us.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you. Any other questions to the board? Okay, though it's not required with this site plan, is there anybody from the audience that wishes to comment on this? No, seeing none? Okay. At this time, we'll enter... Oh, we had one? Oh, come on up. Sorry. Thank you. If you could take a moment to sign in, please?
Over here.
Over here, ma'am.
Hi. My name is Dee, and I've been in the township for 30 years, and yes, we do need a fire station in that area, but I guess I'm concerned about the fact that 21 in Shana is very, very busy, very active, and where this is positioned is that, and, you know, I'm just being concerned is that with that intersection being so close to where the fire station is, because it's so, of course, I don't know how many feet it is or anything, but is there, is there going to be like flashers or something going on there? Like I say, it's a very needed spot to have one, but I'm concerned about where that intersection is and where this fire station is going to be, because these vehicles are going to be coming out, and they're going to bunny... Traffic is very... They're very ruthless, I'll tell you right now, as you probably know, and I'm just concerned about more accidents happening, and I really, you know, nobody wants that, so I guess that's what I'm concerned about here, so.
Yeah, the station will be just about a quarter of a mile north, so we are far enough from the intersection that we will not be impacting the intersection. We are planning an emergency traffic light, just like we do at our 23 Mile Shana station, so when our guys go, we'll obviously be able to hit the button, turn the lights to red, but with the amount of emergency vehicles we have going down in that area every day, like I said, we're down there two, three times a day already, and sometimes more. Our guys are used to the traffic in that area, and they know how to navigate it, but we are planning an emergency signal for that station.
Thank you. That answers your question. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Anybody else from the audience wish to comment? Okay, seeing none, we will bring it back to the board. I'll entertain a motion at this time to approve, deny, or table the site plan in front of us.
I'd like to make the motion to approve site plan application number 16-17 for fire, Chief Jim Swetowski, for property located on the east side of Shana Road, north of 21 Mile Road, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Okay, moved by Oppone, supported by Turner. I'll take the roll call. Mr. Oppone?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Vire?
Yes.
Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Mr. DeSico?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, and we are approved. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is site plan 16-11, Stavros Toma, 47450 Van Dyke, parcel number 23-07-27-351-047, east side of Van Dyke, north side of 21 Mile Road, retail building with drive-through. This is a public hearing. Mr. Turner, can you read the notice of public hearing, please?
Yes. Charter Township of Shelby Notice of Public Hearing. A notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land use. The applicant, Stavros Toma, QZ Shelby LLC, 38900 Van Dyke, Suite 200 Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48312. Proposed use, retail center with a drive-through. The location, 47450 Van Dyke, east side of Van Dyke, north of 21 Mile Road, site plan number 16-11, yeah, 16-11 SLU3. The Sidwell number and legal description are shown. The planning commission will meet on Monday, May 23rd, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the planning commission, the planning and zoning department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary, and was published May 8th, 2016, I believe, a source newspaper. Fifty-seven property owners and three applicants were notified by first-class mail on May 6th, 2016.
Thank you. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this special land use request. All remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. We are a recommending body, and the township board will evaluate our recommendation, which is a legislative body. The township board will make the final decision on the special land use request. At this time, is the petitioner here?
Good evening. My name is Dan Ivanovic. Stavros is not in town, but I am his general contractor, and he asked me to appear in front of the board to answer any questions. Basically, as you see in the site plan, we're planning on having a Jimmy John's there and possibly another restaurant, and then also an AT&amp;T store in between the two, and then the answer according to the plan.
Okay. Mr. Wynn, do you have any comments?
Yes, this, you may recall, the site was formerly the dive shop, and before that, the previous use before that, I believe, was a Long John Silver's restaurant, so it's been in the township for a long time. The reason the special land use is required is because of the drive-through window on the one side. We've done a preliminary review, and they've addressed most of our concerns. There's only a few minor site plan comments that will need to be addressed with the final submission to our department. One is we need a site lighting plan showing lighting locations and illumination levels. The building department indicated automatic sprinkler may be required. That would be evaluated during the building department review. We do need a cross-section for the service lanes of six-inch asphalt on 10 inches of sub-aggregates base. Soil types and characteristics need to be shown, and the existing curb cut from Van Dyke for the entrance to the property to the north must be indicated, and the location of the proposed ground sign may interfere with the proposed storm sewer. Again, all these are relatively minor, comments easily correctable. The building, the site has a substantial setback to the single-family home to the east, about 120 feet, again, I believe, between the parking lot and that home, and there's a substantial landscape buffer between the two, so the site plan meets all of our criteria, Madam Chair and commission members, and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Any to the board, do we have any questions for the petitioner?
More to Ms. Wynn. C2 in our ordinance, it reads for a drive-through access.
It does allow for drive-through facilities.
Why do we require also a special land use? I'm just...
The reason has been that drive-throughs have their own unique characteristics, and they can contribute to some nuisances when you have a single family nearby, and that's why we make it a special land use. In this particular case, the single-family home is so far to the east that the impact is minimized almost substantially, I think, but that's the reason.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Question from Mr. Wynn. The building itself overall looks nice, but on the east elevation, I noticed, and you know, I'm not a big fan of painted block, primed and painted concrete block, but that's what they show. I think we could do something better, but that's just my opinion. What do you think?
We have actually made that correction, and I mean, not even doing it because we don't like to do that either, so we're going to do the whole building with brick, and the structure will be entirely steel, beams and steel walls. I didn't like the idea of insulating block either. You never get the correct insulation, and then it doesn't work. You still have to fur it out before you put drywall, so I spoke with Frank Salomoni, and we decided to make it steel studs, six-inch steel studs, and then the outside facade would be just face brick.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All the way around.
We'll make sure we get that correction on the plans from Frank.
We're going to submit a whole new set of plans soon as, you know, we're done with this. I think he's finishing them up tomorrow.
Okay.
Ms. Chairman?
Dallow?
The applicant, also in the landscaping plan, that's probably misprint, everywhere says there is three units, 1,700 square feet each.
That's correct.
The last page of the landscape, landscaping, indicate the middle unit is 1,530 square feet.
That was, that was the first time that was, that was the case, and then we made the change. I don't remember, I might have gotten mixed up with the submission, but it is 1,700 square feet, I mean, each unit is 1,700 square feet for a total of 5,100 for the building.
Okay. We need to correct that.
Any other questions for the board? At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the audience that would like to come comment? Doesn't appear so. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Move by Turner, support by DeSico. At this time, I'll read the basis for recommendation. They must be based on the following standards. One, compatibility with adjacent land uses. Two, consistent with a, consistent with and promote the intent and purpose of the special land use. Compatibility with the neutral and natural environment. Consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use. Protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the The commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table the request that, to evaluate information received this evening. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Turner?
Before I make my motion, I think we should vote on the motion to close the public hearing. Would we vote on it?
I did, uh...
I made a motion. I didn't think we voted on it.
Oh, okay, thank you. We had a motion to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Now I'll make my other, next motion. A move to approve the special land use application number 16-11 SLU3 for Stavros Toma, proposing a retail building with a fast-food restaurant for the following reasons. The proposed use of this site for a retail center with a fast-food restaurant is consistent with the development pattern along Van Dyke and the previous use of the site. Adequate access has been provided by way of a single entrance to Van Dyke. A setback of 110 feet has been provided between the parking lot and the single-family lot to the west. A substantial landscaped buffer has also been provided to screen the view of this site from the abutting single-family home. The submission of a revised site plan is required incorporating applicable review comments from township departments and consultants, and the proposed site improvements bring this site into compliance with current development practices and zoning ordinance standards.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Oppone. We'll take roll. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Oppone?
Yes.
Mr. Vire?
Yes.
Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda, we have a rezoning petition and a special land use for the same piece of property, the rezoning position number 05-16, and the special land use for site plan number 16-16. Mr. Turner, will you read the notice, please?
One question, Mr. Wynn, these are both the same notices, correct? They read the same?
Yes, but the only difference is the description of the proposal, one for the rezoning and one for the special land use. Otherwise, they're identical, Mr. Turner.
Okay, very good. Charter Township of Shelby Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the planning commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following special land Applicant John Abrow, Abrow Design Group Incorporated for Shelby Holdings LLC, 30600 Northwestern Highway, Suite 310, Farmington Hills, Michigan, 48334. Proposed use, retail center with a drive-through. Location, 46991 Van Dyke, the former Big Boy Restaurant, southwest corner of 21 Mile Road in Van Dyke. The Sidwell number and the legal description are shown. The planning commission will meet on Monday, May 23rd, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the special land use application. The application for special land use and the site plan may be examined at the planning and zoning department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the planning commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. Thirty-one property owners and two applicants were notified by first-class mail on May 6th, 2016, and the notice was published in the source newspaper on May 8th, 2016.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. The format for tonight's public hearing is as follows. This is the only public hearing the planning commission will hold on this rezoning and special land use request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for township board evaluation. The planning commission is a recommending body. The township will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning and special land use request. At this time, Mr. Wynn would like to make his first comments.
Just a way of introduction, this is a little bit unusual because we're combining two requests under one umbrella. One is the request for rezoning from C1 to C2, and that's required to accommodate the use of a drive-through on this site, and C1, they're not allowed. The second application is for the special land use. Again, the special land use is based, basis for that is, again, the drive-through that's required, so we suggested with talking to the applicant extensively, it would be better to consolidate these into a single public hearing, so we're doing, separate motions have been provided. At the appropriate time, you can, you can make those, but the idea behind this application is to marry the site plan with the rezoning, so you have a clear idea of what to expect with the development of this site. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And is the petitioner here to speak with us?
Hello, everyone. My name is John Abrow with Abrow Design Group Architecture. I have collaborated with PA Jim Butler, who prepared the site plan and landscape plans. Our office handled the floor plan and the elevations. As Glenn mentioned, we actually were here even a year and a half ago for the initial site plan discussion for this project, so it has been taking some time, got some great activities with tenants, and, and as he mentioned, yes, rezoning it is proper because I believe the area does have many other drive-through use, so we thought this was fit to rezone the property.
Thank you.
I can discuss the project further, I guess, the next portion or... Okay.
Yeah, sure. Let's do it all at one time.
No problem.
Thank you.
And I believe, sure, you guys have all the plans with you guys here, so we are proposing a square footage of 8317. That will entail four to five multi-tenant building, retail building, single-story. I here have the site plan.
Chair, or John?
Nope. So very briefly, the site plan does, you'll notice the white hatch area, that's the actual building footprint, and then you'd see the asphalt for the loadings on the rear that abuts the actual residential neighborhood, and the parking, predominantly in the north and the east of the building itself. There's quite a bit of parking spaces, landscape area, green belts, and the site does also include a drive-through, potential drive-through tenant. The drive-through window is on the south end of the property, which abuts the actual commercial property rather than the residential. The proposed front elevation, which is the east elevation, does show the five storefronts. Again, like, as I mentioned, it could be a four to five-tenant building. Currently, right now, the developer does have a tenant taking the two north-end spaces, which is the relocation of the Pure Sleep on Hall Road. The building is entirely sea brick product, so there's no painted masonries. It is a finished product, which I actually have two sample, two samples right now. The building will have actually two colors, which you'll see a lot now on Hall Road. There's not just a single color brick. It does give it, you know, just a little bit more color, a little more vibe itself, so... The product is a Michigan-based product, Grand Blank Cement Company, which provide a great color selection, so, and you will have EFIS on the two north, I'm sorry, the north end cap and the south end cap as well. EFIS is, I know that there is a limitation on how much EFIS you can have for the approvals, so we did limit ourselves on how much actual EFIS there is.
Can you hold those samples up for us, please?
Yes, the...
Yeah.
Put them over there. Put them over there. There we go, yep.
Perfect.
And we have a couple different of the EFIS colors, so we actually chose two different colors. These are just sample pieces of what it looks like.
Okay, very nice. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Dallow?
Is that the actual thickness of the material that you're putting in there?
Of the brick?
Yes.
Thickness in regards to depth?
Yes.
No.
So it's like four inches, so...
Yeah, it's actually a 12-inch unit.
Yeah, that's good. And I also, I gotta bring you this comment also, but your front windows going all the way to the ground, I like them, but it just, it's different. We, I don't remember seeing, which is very nice. It looks very nice, though. All your windows for...
Yeah, where you're referring to where there's a five or six-inch sill.
Right, right.
Yes, I mean, you know, our office, we do a lot of shopping centers, and we attend a lot of the retail conventions, and new storefront design is actually full. It's, you know, where there's no sales. Again, not that it's bad, but the trend is definitely getting into full, full-height ten, now it's even going to 12-foot heights ceilings for our glass storefront, so...
Yeah, which is nice, thank you.
Mr. Turner?
Yeah, Mr. Wynn, in your comments, there was a notation, number one, multiple variances are required to accommodate this development. I think it's great we're getting some new viable use for this corner, but I'm wondering, with that comment, is this property not overbuilt?
Well, let's talk about the parking one first. They're underparked, and based on their description of their tenants, at least the one that's going to be half the building, that typically doesn't generate a lot of in-and-out traffic, so I don't think that's a problem. My feeling on parking is generally it's their problem. They need to make sure they have adequate parking and plan their tenants to accommodate that. It's, in my experience, we rarely have those kind of situations where you have sites that don't have enough parking, so they do need a variance, but I'm not terribly uncomfortable with that. The setback issues are largely related to the fact that there isn't the 120 right-of-way, required right-of-way on their site, so the site is what it is right now, and the county doesn't need any more right-of-way, but they do have the 10-foot landscaping in between, so even just, it's the depth of it that's a problem. it that's a problem. You know, they probably got a little more, they got more floor space out of here than the Big Boy, but considering what the site is like now, I think these aren't concessions that I'm uncomfortable with.
What about the note he has on here about a PVC fence? Instead of the concrete fence, we have screening.
We had some discussion with that. I've even had a conversation with a neighbor who's, who's here tonight about that type of product there, which I think you can do an eight-foot section that would provide the security that, and privacy that that neighbor would require. Six-foot just isn't enough, and I think that, that product, I've seen it in an eight-foot section, it looks pretty nice. The only other suggestion I would make, and as part of my site plan comments, on the site plan, there's a 28-foot wide drive-through lane in back of the building. There's actually like two drive-through lanes. One, one is a drive-through lane, and one's a bypass lane. I think that's unnecessary, and it would suggest that they add some landscape, a landscape strip next to that wall to protect it from vehicles, and with some landscaping in there. So you have the, the landscaping and then the wall, or the eight-foot tall fence. And the ordinance gives you some flexibility to deal with modifying the screening requirements, and I think in this site, I've been by there many times, and I was grateful that the neighbor came in and we chatted about it, and we think this is a good solution, and that, that fence has a nice texture to it, and I think the, if it was masonry, it almost looked a little too imposing there.
Because when you hear PVC fence, it just sounds kind of cheap, but if it's something that looks nice...
It's really, it's, it's the same product they're using on the Kroger site, on that brand.
Okay, oh.
And I've seen it in three other applications in this community, two, and it's really good. Once even in a residential where it's in the back of a screening, a shopping center.
Okay.
I wouldn't, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. We've had extensive discussions. We think it's, we think it's a better product.
All right, thank you.
And I'm grateful that we had an opportunity to spend about 20 minutes with the neighbor at the, at the counter, because that was our biggest concern, is how this impacts their living environment. I think it's a reasonable compromise.
And it's a great maintenance product. I mean, again, many communities are, still want that masonry poured wall. You know, they start to shift over, and all of a sudden, the owner has a huge expense, and then all of a sudden, he's taking his sweet time replacing it. This one here, these are sections, and it's softer product, you know, masonry's a little bit tougher.
I saw one other demonstration, if I may, Mr. Chairman, where the first time this was used, it was for an office building off of Mound Road and 23 Mile Road, and we were, we actually approved a masonry wall, and they put that in instead, and I get, you couldn't even tell it visually. So I touched it, and it was giving, and I said, "Well, I'm not that strong to make that, you know, make that product deflect." And they provided us a video of it. Somebody threw a 90-mile-an-hour fastball at it, didn't even dent it. So I, again, I feel pretty comfortable with it.
With regards of the drive-through, there is a 28-foot distance between the building and actual property line. Out of the 28, there's a three-foot walkway, so that when the doors open, do swing over, open up, and then there's also the foot distance, which pretty much gives you the cover distance of the thickness of this fencing. So it does allow us for 20-foot, 24-foot. We thought that it was a good, a good design, having no green belt there, but actually just a bypass lane. That could be...
Can I weigh in on this? I feel very strongly that it's not necessary.
Okay.
I think, you know, some combination, maybe make the land a little wider, but at least 10 feet there, which, so you'd have, instead of the, which, otherwise, what you have is you have the hard-surface concrete or asphalt, then the wall, and there's nothing intervening. Just a little intervening, to add some green there, would make this site really look good without compromising the integrity of your ability to drive around the building.
Okay, so we can do, okay.
Thank you.
Oh, a comment regarding the parking. So this is actually our fourth or fifth Pure Sleep with our office, and I've learned over the years, you know, speaking with the real estate and also the operations, at their max capacity, or even the max shift, is actually two to three employees, max. This is a Hall Road, you know, operation, so, and then customers, only a couple people. So it's really, it's four to six cars, max, for a square footage of 4,000 square foot retail. So regards of parking, and he made a comment, you know, the owners, well, developers typically don't want to overdevelop, and, you know, so, they feel that the parking is adequate for this development.
Thank you. Back to the board, any further questions? Seeing none, at this time, we'll ask anybody from the audience that wishes to comment. Yes? Oh, great, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, at this time, Mr. Nguyen, anything further?
No, just in terms of the, the public hearing for the rezoning, the, this is largely consistent with the master plan, and we do believe some flexibility is needed to accommodate this, the redevelopment of the site. This is addition by subtraction, when you look at it. It's also one of our targets on our blight initiative, where we're trying to target sites to redevelop, and this case, you know, they came willingly to the counter and made the application. This is the way we want to do it, let the private market settle these issues, so we don't have to intervene, and I, you know, Mr. Abro, his client had been very accommodating.
Agreed. I think it's great for the community. At this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
To move.
Moved by Dallow, support by Apon. All those in favor?
Aye.
At this time, we will entertain a motion for the rezoning. The chairman, the planning commission's decision for the proposed use must be based on the practicality of this rezoning request and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan. The commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or table this to evaluate the information received this evening. I'll entertain a motion on this rezoning proposal.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Turner?
I move to recommend approval to the township board of rezoning petition number 5-16, to rezone parcel number 23-07-33-226-039, from C1 local retail to C2 linear retail for the following reasons. The proposed zoning is largely consistent with the existing zoning pattern at the intersection of 21 Mile and Vandijk. The change would not adversely impact any abutting development. The redevelopment of this site is consistent with the recommendations contained in the township's master plan, and the rezoning is necessary component for the redevelopment of the site.
Support.
Moved by Turner, support by Apon. We'll take roll. Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Apon?
Yes.
Mr. Vire?
Yes.
Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Ms. DeSico?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the special land use motion. The commission's recommendation must be based on the following standards. Compatibility with the adjacent land uses, consistency with, and the promote to intent and purpose of the special land use, compatibility with the natural environment, consistent with the capacities of public services and facilities affected by the proposed use, protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and the adequacy of public access to the site. At this time, the commission may recommend approval, disapproval, or the request to table this evaluation for information received this evening. At this time, I'll take a motion to, for the re, for the special land use for this property.
Ms. Chairman?
Mr. Apon?
I'd like to make the motion to approve special land use application number 16-11 SLU4, for John Abro proposing the retail building with a fast-food restaurant for the following reasons. One, the proposed use of this, this site for retail center with a fast-food restaurant is consistent with the development pattern along Vandijk and with the previous use of the site. Number two, adequate access has been provided by the way of a signal entrance to Vandijk. The submission of a revised site plan is required incorporating applicable review comments from township departments and consultants, and approval of the redevelopment plan for this site will, will remove a building that is currently a blight influence on the community in a general and on Vandijk corridor in particular.
Support.
Moved by Apon, support by Turner. We'll take a vote. Mr. Apon?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Vire?
Yes.
Mr. Dallow?
Yes.
Ms. DeSico?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.